I couldn't breathe.
Just gotta keep our reports short.
All right, we'll get started. Welcome, everybody. And just to acknowledge Brian joining us remotely from Long Beach, California.
Lucky.
Maybe we can all
Yep.
Hold our next council meeting in Long Beach.
More Long Beach weather. I'm cool with that, too. You missed the six inches of snow we got today.
Very heavy snow.
Yeah, I didn't miss it much.
I had more than six at my house.
Yeah, well, mine were six.
Yeah, it was, it was, well, it's mostly melted now. Okay, jumping right into item one. I do want to say, though, this is maybe putting something that would be a miscellaneous item on the top of the agenda, but I wanted to let everyone know that the motion to dismiss the claim against Corbett Stevens that the city has been defending was granted, so
Whoa.
We, that's a huge win.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I, the fuges can, so once an order is entered, Ethan gave me the update, so they will actually enter a final judgment, and then, once that's done, there's a 30-day period of time for them to appeal. But in my opinion, it's a very uphill battle for them because the judge's arguments are, I think, very well laid out, and judges, you know, they don't want to be overturned. They don't want their decisions overturned, and I think that's actually the reason that the judge in this case took the time to write a formal opinion and ruling rather than just ruling in the moment. So I think that we are on our way to
So are we done?
Yeah, are we done with everything?
If this is done, once this is done, then it's done. So if there's an appeal filed, so I want to be careful. Let's not talk strategy in an open session.
Right, right.
But this is something that's publicly available, and I think it's good enough news that I wanted to make sure that anybody that joins in on the council meeting or listens to it, I want them to hear it early on so that if they don't sit through it, they won't have to wait for that news. Because I think that was a huge win.
These are from February 13.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. This is
It's February 13.
This is February 13 on the top, and yet
Were you feeling like you were left out, Jody?
Because I looked at number one, and I'm like, I did that last time.
Can we just put up there on this?
Okay.
I needed some scratch paper.
I know, I need some paper then to put my notes on.
So Hawaii was fun, but you missed this. Is that what this is?
I really did.
Are you wanting us to do a do-over?
Yeah, kind of a Groundhog Day moment.
I don't have that in me today.
All right, well, on my agenda.
On the mayor's is correct.
Yeah, item number one is ordinance 2024-10, changing the zoning designation for property located at 121 West Lake U.A. from R2 to R1. So Wayne, could you give us your presentation?
Yes, this is Egbert's property, and they've gone out of town. So
Which Egbert's?
Dean and Janet.
Just making sure. Well, mother's still there.
Yeah. Anyway, you referred this to us when it was presented to the council, and we've had a public hearing on it, and there was no comment, one way or the other, from the public hearing. Nobody had any comment to make. The planning commission has looked and reviewed it and voted unanimously to approve it. The Egberts have a plan. They're doing it in steps. They do want to eventually subdivide their property and create two, essentially one-acre lots out of it, and one available for sale or children or whatever. So the first step is to have a zone changed from R2 to R1. So they meet all the requirements for it, and letters went out to all the surrounding property owners. A number of the pieces of property are zoned one acre in the same area. There are some two-acre ones, but there's quite a few one-acre ones as well. It's not out of the ordinary for another one-acre lot in that area. So I'll have to answer any questions which you might have, but
I, I'm just curious, do they have to build some utilities in? Electricity and water for two properties instead of one?
When they do a request for a subdivision, then that's when those will have to be part of the equation. Right now, they don't. They'll have to find another acre foot of water, point nine oh acre feet to use, but that happens at a subdivision stage, not at the rezoning stage.
Okay, just curious.
So they have time to get it?
Yes, yeah. So this is just changing the zone from R12 to R11.
Great.
Any other question?
All right, thanks, Wayne. Okay, continuing in the sort of theme of good news, Ted's going to give us a Public Works update. All right, nine o'clock finish, maybe, if we're lucky.
I knew you were going to do that, Jody. We would have been fine. I saw item number one, and I'm like, I already did this.
That's when I looked at the assignments. I'm like, huh.
I know.
Doral and I can only go at it so many times a month.
That's right. Over a few of the public work scenes we got going on, just by way of an update. If you have any questions, let me know. We've got a number of things we've been tackling, so just wanted to give the council a quick update. First, the truck sales. So those trucks have been Big O, the plows, the extra spreaders we have, Corbett's truck, and Maroon truck were all authorized to go up for auction. And the Big O, the plows, the spreaders, and Public Works truck, Corbett's truck, are all listed now on the auction site. So those are up. Brian gave me kind of an update. Brian, by the way, is our lister, Hutchings. So the Big O and the plows close on Sunday, and the Public Works truck, Corbett, closes on Wednesday, next Wednesday.
You mean sold already?
No, that's when the auction ends, so they can bid on them till then.
You take the highest bidder?
Yeah, and we'll set, we set reserves on some of them. Brian does, meaning this is the minimum. So far, I don't think anything has hit the reserves of those that have reserves listed. Some don't, some don't.
So we can't, so we for sure are guaranteed a certain price?
Yeah, we want to say we want to have this certain amount.
Okay.
That's good.
So, but the auction's still got some days left.
Till Sunday, did you say?
On Big O, the plows and spreaders. And then Corbett's old truck has till Wednesday. So those are all listed. We're also looking, by way, and this is talking about fleet stuff, we're also looking at some changes with the way we do some some of our city equipment with our tractors, our Kubota, Mini-X, Skidster. We're looking at replacing some of this older equipment with a new piece of equipment that would have some attachments to it for snowblowing, snowplows. Still digging into that, but that's one thing we're also doing. That will consolidate our equipment, and then have equipment that's not, doesn't require so much maintenance. Stay tuned for that. We're also doing the pavement management plan, and this is where we hired the consulting firm to come up and evaluate, assess and evaluate all of our roads, determine what kind of treatments they need for repair, put some cost to it and prioritization. I talked to them today. They have assessed so far about 70% of our roads. They're waiting on some more snow melt to be able to do the rest of the roads, but we can expect that probably sometime around early summer to be complete.
And that may not be good news. Now we're keeping things enthusiastic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The hope is the pavement management plan doesn't come back and say completely replace all your roads.
Or just pack up and move.
Yeah, pack up them, yeah.
It'll probably say replace them all.
Get a gravel truck.
Yeah. So that is under, that is in the works. And that will help us set up a, what we hope to be an annual road repair schedule. So every year, we can plan on which roads we want to do that year and have them planned out for the year, and just continue to do that. So we have kind of a systematic and planned approach. We also are working on on-call RFP for contractors, and that went listed today on the public procurement website. So that is out right now to contractors to submit an RFP. And this will be, we'll call it a pool of contractors that we will put under contract. And the way, the way we've listed it is it's a one-year contract, renewable for up to five years. So you got a year with them. If you don't like them, you kick them out and look for someone else. But if they're doing a good job, then you just keep renewing for the next five years. Of course, evaluating costs every year and stuff like that. So that, it closes on the 19th, so we should
How many? Are you expecting to get three?
Well, so as many, as many want to propose can. There's a grading criteria in the RFP to grade the contractors, and we set a minimum, so there's 100 points available. We set a minimum of 70 points. They have to score to get in the pool. So it could be three, four. I don't know that we've set a number. I think we'll see how many we get.
Above 70 will be in the pool.
Could be in the pool, uh-huh.
And Ted, just to clarify, these are contractors that we are hiring for particular tasks, right? I mean, like water line breaks and so forth.
Correct, yeah, on-call services, so it could be emergency. And we listed in there, they have to be available within one to two hours. So they have to respond within one, two hours in the event of emergency, and we have to have, I think it was two 24-hour contacts for them, each one. So, and then, but in addition to that, if we have just little projects that come up, you know, we need a hydrant replaced, like we did the one day or something like that, we can just call these guys and say, you know, come on and do that, even though it's not an emergency, but someone we can just bring up to do the projects. So that went out today and closes on the 19th, so we hope to have a pool of contractors, you know, by sometime in April. We went with the engineering company up to the well about a week ago. There is quite a bit of work, as we've talked about, up the well still remaining to be completed. I'd say 65, 70% of that's electrical. So we met with the engineering company up there. We went through the well. They're working on putting together a proposal right now to provide us a cost to just do a complete design of everything that needs to be done with a bid package that we can put out to bid contractors and just have one contractor come in and just finish it all up and get the well done. So hope to see that proposal within the next year or two from the engineering company and then get that underway. The goal is by next winter, we have the well all completed and done before snow flies.
And that'll be three phases?
That'd be three phases. We're even getting a cost. So there is a new pump that, we went up there and looked, there's a new pump sitting in the wellhouse, too. So we've got 125 horsepower pump right now, which pumps about 750 gallons a minute. Just some back of the nap and calculations I did. There's a 200 horsepower pump sitting up there, but it requires three phases. Wayne's been sitting there. But if we put that in as well, that'll get us about another 250, 300 gallons a minute.
As well? So we've, we can actually have two pumps going?
No, you replace the one that's there. You replace the smaller 125 horsepower with the larger 300.
It like becomes a spare or something?
It, it, it could. It'd probably be surplus, and we'd want to replace it with another 200 horsepower.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
But we need to have, I mean, are those, the higher-capacity pump, is that something that's readily available? Or would we need to get one to have on standby because of emergencies?
So that's a good question, and the answer is yes. We probably want one on standby at some point, have or have one. It's kind of one of those things that are a little bit tough. You don't want them sitting on the shelf too long. So by putting a new pump in, I think we would probably wait just a little bit longer. Motors are typically the long lead items, and they're, they can be, you know, months to get those. But so we'll want to have a spare, but kind of the question mark is when do we get that? Because if you, if you sit them on the shelf and they sit there for 15 years and never get used, then, you know, you've basically wasted a pump type thing, so.
Okay, I just remember a long time, there was something with the well years ago that we had, you know, something went out, and it took like a long time to get, and then we were trying to keep a spare part.
Yeah.
I can't remember what it was, but just remember having this question.
Yeah.
So the Corbett liked to keep lots of spare parts, right?
Yeah.
Just in case.
Yeah, we've got a lot of stuff to work through. So, but that is a good, you know, something we'll need to look into at some point in the future. We do have the Broad Hollow wells as a backup. If this one ever goes out, we can, we can pump out of that one for a while. I'm sure we could talk Salem into getting a little more water if we needed it out of it for short term. So. So we hope to have the well completed also within the year. West Loafer, the road project. Wayne could speak more to Summit Creek, but as far as the engineering goes and the project, that one is, I met with the engineering company today, went through the design. They're going to finish that up here in the next few months. We'll probably put that one out to bid to contractors sometime late spring, early summer. So we can have it, we want to have it, it's probably going to take a couple minutes, a couple months to finish. And we want to have it done by mid-October because that's the end of paving season. So the goal is to have that done by mid-October. So that one, they're kicking up the design. It's probably about a 60-ish percent design right now, so it's a matter of finishing that up. Stormwater management plan is another project we've got going on. As you remember, this is the one that FEMA funded, 75% of the cost for. And this is to help us figure out what's going on with all our water in town and to stop flooding Salem and Utah County. About three years ago, after the, after all the floods, that house down in Utah County got flooded, and they sued the county. The county then came, met with us and said, you know, we won't take the lawsuit. We'll take this lawsuit, but next time, it's your guys' water. We'll let you deal with it. So we went for some funding to help us do a stormwater management plan to help us figure out how to better manage the water that's leading our community. So that project is underway. The engineering company's got pretty much all the design criteria put together, and they're working on the modeling right now. So that one's not a rush, rush project. FEMA doesn't like you to get through these too fast, but the goal is to have it done sometime around the end of the year. And then from there, it's just trying to figure out, now that we have the plan, how do we implement it? Is it implementable? And then the other one is the FEMA Broad Hollow FEMA culvert funding we applied for. This one was the one that's the culverts on Broad Hollow that needed to be upgraded and/or installed as part of, discovered as part of the mitigation project up the new mitigation basin. When we discovered the NRCS wouldn't pay for those culverts, we reached out to FEMA through the Utah Division of Emergency Management. They had some funding available. We applied for the funding. It has to be an independent project for FEMA to be able to fund it. I think we were able to demonstrate it could be an independent project. It's not, you know, whether the basin's built or not, these culverts still help us manage our water runoff. We applied for the funding. They, FEMA came back with what they call an RFI. It's basically a request for more information. There are some unclear things in the application or things they want to clarify. They asked us about four or five questions. We responded to that. We sent it back. This all goes through the Division of Emergency Management. We don't deal with FEMA directly. We deal with the state agency. So we worked with the Division of Emergency Management, got all the questions answered, sent it to them back on February 13th because Emergency Management wants the chance to review it before it goes to FEMA. It's due to FEMA tomorrow, and I haven't heard back from the Division of Emergency Management, so I'm assuming everything's okay, and they're just going to send it into FEMA. Then we'll wait to see what FEMA says.
Is there anything that we need to do, I mean, if there's, I mean, it's in their hands, so.
Yeah, I think we've done everything we can do right now, and now it's just a matter of, it'll go back to FEMA. They could either ask more questions, or they could say your funding's authorized and
Do they have like a timeline, so you, or do we just wait?
Yeah, it's just kind of a wait. I wish they did, but unfortunately, they give us timelines without any on their end.
But, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, you did indicate that the RFI was a good sign, right?
Typically, when they're asking you questions, it's because they just want some clarification, but it's, that means it's moving towards being authorized. So it's usually a good sign, not to saying they couldn't still deny the application, but it's usually a good sign that they're trying to clarify some stuff, so.
Great.
I think that's pretty much what we've got going on in Public Works.
I for one love your update. You know, it's, I see things really getting scheduled out there and getting completed, or at least a goal, progress, yeah. So thanks.
Oh, yeah, you bet, you bet. We are still working on our asset management plan. That's just going to be continual update to that thing, but, so.
Great, thanks for your excellent report, Ted.
Ted, real quick, have you started looking at the lease for the Public Works/Fire Chiefs truck?
I think I'm, we're just working with Chris. We're going to set up a meeting with the lease company to meet with them and see what's available to us. But that's in the works, trying to set up
With the long lead times and stuff, and then we'll have to do some work on it to put the lights and things like that in, so I just kind of wondered where that was at.
I just, you know, from being in finance, I wanted to comment that Ted is actually not using Corbett's truck because it's bigger and he doesn't want one that big. He actually is downsizing in truck, and I think that's kind of admirable, right? But you said it's because you can get in cul-de-sacs and stuff, like if you have to respond for fire, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, responding in a large truck like that, you know, a lot of times you're moving lights and sirens and maybe going a little faster than the speed limit. Don't tell our sheriff that, though, or our sheriff's
What do you mean? He'll be right behind you.
I hope I'm behind him. I hope he's in front, leading the way, but
I just thought if anyone's listening, and I, I mean, I can see that they're not, but it's not because you want a fancy new truck. You actually want a smaller.
I want a little smaller truck, yeah. Our, I mean, just with our narrow streets and stuff like that, to be responding in lights and sirens in emergency situation, and a larger truck's just not a safe. And I would prefer to have a, about the size, you know, an F-150-type truck. Yeah, yeah.
Actually, since you're there, Carrie, would the two of you mind jumping ahead to item five? The tabled ordinance 2024-4. Is there any?
Oh, 2024-4, that had to do with the, with the short-term rent.
Right.
And so it's still tabled. As I said last time, we have to wait till after the legislative session is over, which is Friday. I turned it into the league. They said they're not, they don't think that what we're doing is right, but they want some time to look over it after the session. And that I talked to the lawyer there, and they're going to give us some advice.
Okay, great.
So on that one, and the other one, only other one that, okay, no, that's all, that was it.
I just figured since we had Ted up here and the two of you might have some update, I could give you the option.
Yeah, that was with the short-term rental.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
All right.
Continue to table it.
Thank you, Ted.
Chris, items three and four.
Yeah, nothing more than I had in the email. Because Ted's putting all these agreements and plans together, there's not a whole lot of capital, a lot of money going out at the moment. I would suspect here coming up shortly, once we get these plans back and council approves some of the projects, then we'll start seeing some money going out. But as far as, we've collected 99.8% of our property taxes, which is phenomenal this year. And that's very, very good. Maybe not 90. It's over 90%, and that is just unheard of for this time of the year, especially with, with kind of the economy, the way it's slowing down a little bit, but that's where we are.
Chris, I got a question for you. They're in revenues. 3125 motor vehicle fees. Where it looks like we're, you know, 46.56 percentage for the year. How much of that do you think is because of the increase of electrical vehicles? Because they're not assessed.
Right.
Are they assessed differently there, or what's impacting that number?
More, so really what impacts that more is more people moving in and registering their vehicles to their new home address here in Utah or in Woodland Hills. As far as electric vehicles, like when I register my car, I've got two choices on my electric vehicle. I can pay an estimated amount, which is a flat extra amount of money, or I can have a reporting system where I report to the state the mileage I drive. And so it's, it's not that much more, and so I take the flat fee because I don't really want to be reporting my mileage.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
I looked through all of it. It looked good.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, moving on to item six. Personnel, we did have some discussion about the need for a deputy recorder, and I think that we're okay with that one at the moment. Jody has indicated that building permits are down and with some of the legal exercises also dwindling. She seems to feel that we can wait on that one, so I'm all for saving that money. Yeah, I know. She's just in Hawaii, so how bad could it possibly be? No, I'm just joking. But her and Lori have a good system, and I believe that it's working well. So I think that we just don't need to spend that money at the moment, so, but it may change. And then Ted is also, you know, I don't know that there's anything immediately in the future, but I know that he's got his eye on, at least in the shorter term, sort of an understudy that he can raise and hand the reins when he decides that he's had enough. So, and that's everything for me.
Does he have somebody in mind for that?
I don't know, Ted. Do you have somebody in mind for your understudy?
No, not yet. Someone that's willing to work with me, which could take a few years.
There's really suffering of all sizes and shapes tied with the position, but
No, I think, I mean, for the most part, we're generally okay right now. He's still trying to get a handle on everything, so it's probably going to be a while.
I just wanted to
He's back. He's been doing a lot of stuff for us, and he's been doing a great job. So he also did a lot of testing and stuff.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Okay, so that's it for me. Council member Hilliard.
So we had an EM meeting today down at the sheriff's office, and it was great. I had a lot of attendance, you know. Deputy was there to make sure I stayed in line, and Carrie was there. It was fabulous. It was a light meeting. We went pretty quick. I have a few things that I'll bring up for, with a few different auxiliary heads. But one that's here is they talked about offering Everbridge training. And so I kind of wanted to bring that to the attention of this body to see if that's something we'd be interested in. They talked a lot about something called an IPAS?
IPAS, yeah. IPAS messaging, which is county-wide messaging for emergencies that they don't use very often.
It's, it's super rare. It, they explained it as it's kind of like how we receive messages for like Amber Alerts, though it's not Amber Alerts. That was very clear, that it's not Amber Alerts. Basically
So it's not going to go off at 2:00 a.m. or
It very well could. So basically, what it is, is it's a type of message that goes through Everbridge that they can hit a cell tower with it, and that cell tower will then message everybody that can hit with that cell tower. And so it's, I envision it kind of more like
Earthquake.
An earthquake or a massive gas leak or something that would really have a broader impact than just the city. But in essence, this Everbridge training, from what I'm gleaning there, is Everbridge has a large scope of what it can and cannot do, and what it should be used for and what it shouldn't be used for. And I think, personally, I think there would be some value in us maybe having one of the, or Quinn, come in and give that Everbridge training to us as a council and to our staff just so we fully better understand what the capabilities are, how we can better utilize it. How does it integrate with the county? How does it integrate with the state? When does the state need to do the message? When does the county need to do the message? When do we, there's just, I think, some good complexities there.
Doral and myself and John and Rachel and Lori, and I think Ted. Are you trained on Everbridge? Okay, we've all been through
Okay.
At least one, if not two or three trainings on the Everbridge system.
Would there be any value from your understanding there that for it to be a kind of more watered-down training for the elected official?
Well, the only thing is you'd have to have a login for the training and to be able to send messages out. So probably, I've asked Quinn to add Janet, and she should be
I'm added, but I haven't got training.
Right, she's added, so that she could as
Do you have a log-on? Can you log on?
Yeah.
That's the first problem.
That's the first thing, yeah, so
I did do that.
So it just depends how many people you want to have the rights.
I'm wondering if it makes more sense from a higher level, so not necessarily operator level, but from a understanding of whatever bridge is. You know, so like the mayor, if he needs to send something, he'll better understand. Or, you know, myself, if the mayor's out of the city and can't be reached, we just have a better understanding of, Jody, please do this versus, Jody, teach me what you might need to do, you know?
Does the county recommend that we do that training?
Yeah, that's kind of what they said today.
They pushed it pretty hard. They wanted it, they they spoke specifically to turnover. This is a s- a training that they would like to have happen kind of routinely as we're turning over versus with election, elected turnover and staff turnover.
Right.
So I think it would make sense, but I wanted to also just bring it here before I just said, yes, pick us.
Yeah, no, I I I think it would be a worthwhile exercise. I mean, do you have any sense as to how long uh?
I can talk to Quinn on that, um, and kind of know it. So it's about an hour, okay.
So maybe we can even start a council meeting a little early or or something. I mean, or maybe when we have a really light agenda, I mean, or we could.
We could make a light.
Make a light agenda and then just add that to a council meeting. I mean, I I agree with you. I think that there would be value in uh, us understanding it operationally, even if there's not. Cause I agree, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea for everyone to be able to send messages through it. I just think that it's better, it's limited in its accessibility, but I do think that there would be value in all of us.
Okay, I'll talk to Quinn and then I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Um, if I can, I'll try and see if I can even get that information for tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you.
I also wanted to say one thing I forgot to tell you earlier. Um, we've been a member of UEMA, the Utah Emergency Management Association for a few years now. And I got a notice that um, that we needed to renew our dues. And I kind of thought, once we are subscribing to things, that was administrative role to subscribe to whatever we're members of. Um, can we make sure that we um, redo?
Well, those will have to come.
That email gone to, I haven't seen anything, or Chris, have you seen anything? So if those emails are coming to you, we probably need to have the point of contact changed in order to get those bills.
Cause you paid it last time, so I thought you were the point. I never paid it, so I figured you were.
Carrie, could you forward that email to me? I'll contact them and coordinate on making sure the communication lines are correct.
Should be on there correctly, so I just wanted to make sure. I I I didn't get anything about the dues, just a reminder of.
Yeah, I haven't gotten any.
So I'll see if there's.
If you can forward that to me, that'd be great.
If there's um, somebody specific to talk to. But that's a good association for us to be a member of.
Wonderful, that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Hudgens.
Okay, so Public Works Committee, we did meet uh, last month. Um, it was actually quite a a good meeting with all the new members. Um, Mark had agreed to stay the chairman for the next year. Um, and so we are moving forward with that. Um, we went through a lot of Ted's plans. I mean, that's basically, I'm sure uh, Carrie's got a lot of notes on it. I don't have mine with me. But we basically went over the majority of of what Ted's plans were for the new committee and how we wanted to uh, how we wanted to work it and and how, well, how he wanted to work it and and um, kind of split things up a little bit. And so we we divided, you know, they divided some different sides of Public Works to different people. Um, I I'm sure Carrie, like I said, will have a a much more detailed information. I just don't have my notes with me. I forgot to bring them. Um, uh, PTR, uh, we were planning to meet, but uh, they were waist deep in in uh, maple sap. And so uh, it was decided not to meet last month, so I don't have any updates from PTR. Um, on the Planning Commission side, um, one of the things that the Planning Commission is working on is um, looking at our our uh, swimming pool ordinance, our swimming pool ordinance has some uh, oddities that we can't quite figure out why they're there. There's a twenty foot setback from the house, which we have houses that aren't uh, that don't have their pools setback like that. And then they have uh, bigger setbacks on the yard. Um, and so Wayne's looked at Paysons, um, and uh, some of those, you know, we're looking at changing that. So they're gonna be having a public hearing um, on changing that ordinance and then it'll come to the city council uh, from there.
Great, thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Okay, uh, council member Kinniston.
All right, in the uh, public safety world, um, just to make you aware, we're uh, we're getting more calls this year than typical. I think we're up to sixteen so far in in uh, twenty twenty four, uh, even fires, so we've been going on some fires. So luckily they're not in our city, so we always like those. Good practice for us. Uh, so some medicals and some fires and uh, and so our guys are are responding. Um, I just would mention on January thirty first, we held a public safety meeting. We had seven in attendance and had a good chat. Topics were uh, future evacuation plans, just preliminary, um, street signs. We talked about those, city cameras, neighborhood watch, um, talked about our sirens. We might mention here that Ted and I still need to meet and talk about the it, the getting our sirens running steps, how we would be able to do that. I think we've got some costs and so on and I'm encouraged. I think they're, I think it's doable. We just need to wrangle something out of Chris's wallet and we can do it.
Doral, on that, um, have we stopped the Everbridge call that goes out that says the sirens are gonna happen at noon? Because we haven't had the sirens for a long time, but the calls have still been going out. So every once in a while you get the text, I didn't hear the siren, I didn't hear, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how those were automated. I I wasn't aware of what stirred those. Uh, is it dispatch that did those that would that would alert us, alert us on the?
We might.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we might need to have them stop those.
Or or just another month and then.
We're gonna see. I I expect it to be stopped, you know, cause they're not gonna make any noise.
They're the ones who kicked us out, so they're probably.
Yeah, so.
Might wanna let them know.
Let's kind of watch.
Who's over dispatch?
Huh? Yeah, I don't know. I I I know a guy.
I was just thinking of that because I got a couple of, uh, I mean, cause this next Saturday will be our
I can.
Our siren test day. We'll all get a notice about it.
I will be, I will talk to Heidi and find that out. That's a good question.
About, I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it.
So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Council member Lund.
Um, yeah, Finance Committee, we met last month. We already talked about it. We was just talking about the trucks and the equipment. That was mostly what we talked about. Um, and then Communication Team, um, we've been doing the newsletter and trying to get things out. Jody, did you get back in to Facebook? You were locked out for a minute. Okay, um, I do wanna get with Carrie, I don't, we, we do use MailChimp too. We talked about sending the newsletter out through MailChimp and with the utility bill, but um, I don't know how to, I don't have access.
Get together, yeah, because like Mylan still likes our our utility bill, a hard copy. And so I thought that everybody who got a hard copy would get the newsletter hard copy, but only the people who get it electronically got it, the copy.
So I just, um, I don't have access to MailChimp, so if we could get together and do that, um, this week, maybe, um.
Probably not till next week.
Okay, first of next week, we could send it out later on MailChimp. That would still be okay, cause it'll still be the first of the month. And then events and volunteers, um, nothing new there. Um, they are working on, they're buried in syrup again tonight. Sherry Burgers, they've got people like Cruz around the clock and Sherry said, I guess I'm on syrup duty tonight, so.
They got five hundred gallons yesterday.
Well, I'm seeing a lot of those blue barrels. I didn't know what they were.
Get so much.
Drive that I'm wondering if that's gonna get clobbered by a.
I had real estate agents ask me, they're like, yeah, I was driving around up your part of the woods and there's all these blue barrels and hoses. What is that about? So I told them they're out to the Maple Fest.
See, we're trying to offset our revenue by cooking up something.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah, they're going strong, busy, busy.
That's great.
So just a question for Janet. I saw the February newsletter, at least the link on the on the city webpage. And we submitted some numbers for responding in January. Did it, did you run out of real estate? Just wondering.
You submitted them to.
To you.
Hmm, I, everything that I've been getting, you sent me a text that would be for this newsletter.
What does that mean, this newsletter? Is that for the next one you're printing?
Yeah, when you sent it to me, the other one had already gone out, so you sent me a text.
Is that how it works? Brian, remember we talked and I sent some numbers over after they were approved by Rachel and Ted?
Yep, I think, I think that was, well, we were looking at January's numbers because I thought it was coming out in February. Um, but I guess that's, I guess we were a little late for that, for that one, so.
I don't, everything, anything that I get, I check my emails every couple of days and anything that's newsletter, that is supposed to go in the newsletter, I red flag it. So if it's not in there, I didn't get it. I will tell you that I do have trouble with my email, Chris, while you're on here.
I do too.
I don't get emails from Wayne until somebody responds to his email. If he emails me directly, I don't get them. Um, there's a few people like that and.
And mine is just opposite. I can see it first, but if somebody responds, then their attachments go away. I can't see any of the attachments or things like that.
So if you're, you've sent me something and I haven't gotten it, I really haven't gotten it.
Maybe.
Janet, you got my my article, right, on?
Yeah, and it's in there. Um, I I got that, so we're good there.
Maybe I, maybe I did it in text.
And I just looked through my text.
See this one right there?
I went, I went clear back to.
It's just a little blurb, but maybe I shouldn't have done it in text.
Well, it was Doral and who else is on there?
Uh, Brian and I, Ted, Rachel.
Just resend it to me right now, just me. Um, but email is better because I get texts from real estate agents and lenders.
Your your city email, your city email would be good, right?
My city email, yeah, and then I could say.
Just don't copy Wayne.
I, yeah, I red flag all of them and save them, so that when I go back, I can just pull those and I know what's supposed to go in the newsletter. That way I don't lose anything.
Yeah, February's went out on the fifth of February, so that was, that, we we were looking at the twenty first being our deadline, remember, Doral?
Yeah, yeah.
For Marches.
Oh, wow, oh, wow, okay.
Well, I can't.
So you might wanna get.
Wanted to go out the first of February, I can't get information on February twenty first and expect it to be in the newsletter for the first of.
I don't know what's wrong with you.
Come on, radio is a time machine and problem solved.
Yeah, you'll email that to me. I'll add it, cause I'm just.
Well, I'll, I'll have February's by then, but I guess I'm two months behind then in giving our numbers.
Do you have, I mean, if you have February's, give them to me.
Not yet. Well, they're still accumulating.
So even like the the sheriff's report, we're we're a little bit behind, we're a month behind.
So Brian, I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit February's next month, okay?
Yeah, I think that's how it's gonna have to work.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll get these to you for.
Okay, yep, and I'll get them added. I've got something else. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you've got a cute flower by yours.
Thank you.
It's in there, but I've got a couple more things I have to add, so, sounds like.
All right, yeah, no, and great job on that. Thank you. Anything else from you, Janet?
Nope, that's all I got.
Okay, council member Malkovich.
So Public Works, Brian gave most of it and of course Ted's uh, recap of all the things that are going on are things that we talked about. We also talked about the CPF grant. Um, I haven't had a chance to really work on that. Been busy with legislative things mostly every day. Um, with that, you saw that there was a action alert came out earlier today for SB one eighty five. This is really, really important. Um, Senator McCall already voted against it, but we all need to uh, to email or text Representative Burton because it will be heard in the House tomorrow. And this is a bill, it's called um, um, the Residential Building Inspection Amendments, Senator Vickers. And we've been working really hard with him to try to get it changed, but in its current form, it's not good for us. Uh, basically it is anytime a builder is building and wants an inspection, they can just hire their own person without even coming to the city. And that, um, not only is it, it's for everything in the building and so, um, for us. This is, this is uh, Senator Vickers' bill and Representative Musselman is the floor sponsor. There's been a few bad actors in the state who are not doing their inspections within the three days. And they feel that it's been enough to showcase that the builders, I mean, as we know, land use uh, bills have been really huge, especially housing. So builders are saying, well, the reason we're not building more houses is because the cities aren't inspecting them on time. Cities are saying a lot of times the builder comes and they're not even ready for an inspection, right? But so this one just bypasses the city and allows a builder then to hire their own inspector. Could be their brother in law, their cousin, whoever, they, there's, there's nobody, I mean, they have to be qualified, obviously, but they could hire the same person over and over. And then the city has to front the bill for whoever they hire. And um, so that's one problem with it. The second is that it's nepotism. It is, it is a conflict of interest, flat out. The third thing, um, uh, DEM also has it on their build tracker, so League has it on their build track. DEM has it on their build tracker because it it bypasses the fire chief inspecting fires. So these other people can be the ones that come in and do that inspection, any inspection that has to do with the city. So um, they're going to be hearing it tomorrow in the House. And so I will, um, I saw Jody had um, kind of sent forwarded um, the general um, email from the League that asked for us to to do that, um, to respond. So send it to Representative Burton and if you knew any other House members personally, send it to them. We don't wanna spam them with stuff if we don't live in their district, cause that then defeats the purpose. So um, definitely though, to um, with the full out fight right now, to say, change it. So one of the things I did ask Senator Vickers to change it with the other day was, okay, give us our three days. Make, so that we can at least do our due diligence. Give us our three days. On the fourth day, you can hire someone, but it has to be off of this approved list and it would be randomized. So you weren't just picking your best friend out every time. Be randomized for your county. So it was within a certain distance of of wherever you were wanting them. That way, there was another level of protection for the city, uh, because the city is still held liable.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask.
That's the thing. The city is still held liable for these inspections to be done correctly. And so it's a bad bill, so we really need to red flag that one. Um, the other thing is a couple, a couple of things. We had um, Agriculture Day on the Hill uh, last Friday. And um, we, uh, it was the Farm Bureau Day and all the things that had to do with farming. And so our Maple Festival people, we had a table there. And I gave samples, little bottles of samples to all of our legislators and to the governor and everybody came by and they loved our syrup. We told them, you know, some of the stats, that we are the only place in the world that produces big tooth maple syrup, that species of maple tree. We are only the second syrup producers west of the Mississippi. The other one is in Washington State near the Canadian border. So people were just flocking to get their samples. Uh, Greg pretty well ran out of cups. And um, great, and Jesse, who is the, is the research student, he's getting his masters um, at USU in plant biology. And he is, this is his master's program, this fest, this whole maple project. And so everybody was coming up and asking him a million questions and it was just really successful. We had legislators just begging to buy bottles. One person actually offered Greg a hundred dollars for a bottle and he said, no, you have to come to our festival.
And then you can buy a bottle.
So, so that was pretty fun to be able, and we had a video with a loop that they could watch the whole process of how it was happening in Woodland Hills. It was really a great day. Um, the second thing is, I just wanted for you're aware, uh, to be aware, our caucus night is on March fifth. Um, that's next Tuesday night. The Republicans will be meeting here in the city center. The Democrats meet as a county and they meet in Lehigh. So if you want to find out that it's at Fox, uh, Fox Hollow Elementary School in Lehigh, you have to look on the website. You can find that address. But for Republicans, it will be here at seven PM. We're asking everyone to pre-register. I'll put some stuff on social media on the community page, so people will know, but that will be, and it's also not just um, our precinct is our entire town. And so it's not only for the Republicans, it's not only electing our precinct delegates. It's also what's called the presidential preference um, ballot. So if you are Republican and you want to put your vote in as a primary for for president, you come that night and do it. If you're a Democrat, you were mailed your ballot in the mail because the state is handling that, the party wanted to. that, the party wanted to have, the Republican Party wanted to handle their, their votes differently, Democrats went through the state, so that's why some people got ballots and some people didn't. And then, and it is, you have to be a Republican to vote, it's not for an affiliate, so sorry. And then I wanted to find out if we were deciding to go to the, the League Conference in May, and if we were...
What are the dates?
We might want to get our hotels, so that we will, we can actually be closer.
We've already gotten the hotels, we get a discount rate with Chris.
Oh, it's in March, it's in April, sorry.
Is this St. George?
At, at the hotel we've stayed in, it's significantly less expensive than the ones around in the area, I did check the ones in the round in the area, Fairfield is already booked, and the other ones are about $80 to $100 more a night than what...
What are the dates?
It's Mar, April 17th through the 19th.
Okay, I've been wondering.
Wednesday through Friday.
Yeah, so Chris has already got his, the hotel rooms for those who are wanting to attend.
We might not, we might want to, I mean, we are anyway, but to be out where we are, because a lot of the hotels in closer are having bed bug issues.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. I'm more than happy to drive as far as we have to.
I want to stay.
Well, all the way to Las Vegas, in fact.
I'm, I'm, I'm good, avoid bed bugs.
I don't like, I might, you know, be camping in my Jeep.
So, that's all, just, just make sure that tonight you either text or email Jeff Burton about SB 185 and opposition, and you can see all of the reasons why we're opposed is on, is on that email that Jody forwarded to everyone. The League is against it, the Department of Emergency Management is against it, the City Managers Association is against it, and several others, but they're really coming down hard.
Okay, good suggestion, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Who all do I need to get rooms for?
Yeah, I, I don't know if everyone can commit, I, I will be out of town, so I will not be able to go this year, I know, I'm disappointed, I wanted to hear more...
I want more stories.
Maybe we can just call you directly, Chris.
But I, I do want to let everyone know, though, that what we've decided to do is just allocate a certain amount equally distributed among everybody, and if you want to stay in the JW, in Las Vegas, well, that's probably not JW in Las Vegas, in fact, I don't think...
There is.
Oh, there is, okay, if you want to stay there, you're welcome to, but you'll have to absorb the added expense, so we'll just do a straight across, everyone gets an even allocation, and so, we're not gonna dictate where everyone can stay, but we'll just try to share those resources fairly. But anyway, Chris?
It's 99 tonight, the fire department just got back, and it was 99 even tonight at Hampton.
All right, so please let Chris know if you can go, and Ted, I know there was some discussion, I don't know what your availability is, but there might be some real value, that's a thumbs up, you are gonna go.
So, we can get them new?
This is gonna be a real party, I, I really wish I could go.
We can get the stories from you there, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we got some, or you got some...
So, if you can...
Will you invite Monica to come?
Well, she's gonna be with me.
Oh, shoot.
But she's usually with you down there too, so...
Yeah, I know, I know.
We're gonna miss both of you then.
So, I need to register people, so if they can let me know who will be...
How, how long do you need to know?
I get a discount early registration if I do it, I think before March...
Yeah, it's pretty soon.
First?
Yeah, I think it's this week.
If you guys let Jody know, she'll let me know what rooms and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, right away.
Okay, thanks Carrie, and, and thanks for that other useful information. Okay, possible items for upcoming city council meetings, Ben you already mentioned, which I think does merit some additional discussion, the Everbridge, and then I got an email from, I can't remember her name, but it's about Utopia, is there any interest, Utopia can come do a brief presentation on the infrastructure, and she suggested that she could come to a council meeting.
Would that just be like, what's current status of it, maintenance?
I think so, I actually don't really know.
Yeah, what's the purpose? That's what I would want to know.
Yeah.
Because we already have it, so...
Yeah, no, it's not a pitch, it's for those who have it, it's, it's more of, I, I believe it's something that is more geared toward understanding your infrastructure, so.
Okay.
If, if there's a, well, I, I say that, I, I haven't responded yet, but is there any interest in that? I mean, if, if, if there's not, we'll, we'll spare ourselves the exercise, but if you think that there's value in it?
Hard to say, I mean...
Could be, I just don't know, it could be interesting, I always love learning about new things.
Well, that's what I think.
That's why we're here, right?
Yeah, so if it's, if it's to update us on our system and how it works, or if there's anything changed, that would be useful to us.
And, and along those same lines, SESD, so Elk Ridge is, their council is going on a tour of SESD facilities, and I actually thought that was a good idea, if, if everyone here wanted to go on a tour and see exactly, you know, what our utility actually consists of.
I actually like that, because I think when people complain, if we understand the inner workings, it's easier to defend it.
Yeah, I think so too, all right, I'll get, I'll get that set up too. Okay, and, and that, that would not be a Tuesday night thing, likely, it would probably be something during a weekday, but I'll, I'll let you know what some of our options are.
And aren't we supposed to be having a tour at your place?
Yes, I, thank you, if you're okay. We can do a tour with the director, either on the 26th of March or the 27th, this is for the transfer station, the new transfer station.
26th or 27th?
I actually went through it last week with Terry, and it is, it's really, really cool.
Since our council meeting's on the 26th, how about we pick the 27th?
Well, so it's the 26th or the 27th between 9:00 and 3:00, or the 29th at 8:30, that would be also in the morning, or after 1 o'clock that day.
I say 27.
That's Wednesday?
So, it'd be Wednesday the 27th.
Of what month?
Of March.
And what are our options timewise?
Um, 9:00 to 3:00, anytime between 9:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon.
Morning is early.
Let me see if I can't also push him a little bit.
She's not gonna be over there playing pickleball, she can just come right on over.
Oh, yeah, I play pickleball at 8:00, I'll be sweaty.
Hey, we'll take, it's a, it's a dump, it's a clean, very beautiful dump right now.
So, 9 o'clock AM? Is where 10 to 10?
Or like 9:30 or whatever, I don't...
So, 9:30 potentially?
Yeah.
27?
Yeah.
So, we'll just not have our staff meeting that, or everybody can, the staff can join, and we can make that a, a mobile staff meeting.
I have the announcement for the ribbon cutting in the newsletter.
Oh, perfect, okay.
So, 9:30?
Yeah.
So, okay, March 27th.
March 27th, 9:30. Wonderful, I will let them know.
And is all the council planning on attending that? Because if they are...
Oh, good point.
I need to make sure that I post this.
I don't think we have to, because it's, there's no business conducted, and it's somebody else that's hosting it, I mean, when we go to other events, we don't, we don't...
Brian is, Brian is the most recently trained in this, but I believe that incidental gatherings are probably not subject to the notice requirements, but this would be...
Because church every Sunday, you'd have to do it.
I would say that's incidental, this seems more like a planned council outing.
Either way, I don't really care, but I'm just saying that a lot of times...
They've done other council tours, I can talk to Terry, he's kind of the king of Stickler Sunshine Law.
Okay.
So, I can see what they're doing for that, but I would imagine that due to the fact that zero business is discussed and it is purely an infrastructure tour.
I know.
I think it's safe to post rather than...
I would say post that we're doing it, but I don't think we need to take minutes or notes or record or anything.
No.
So, but I'd have no problem posting.
Will you send us all of the information as it gets, you know, an email with all of it and where we're meeting and all that?
Yes.
I'll be out of town, so I won't be able to attend.
Well, maybe Ben can just hold his tablet and walk us through.
Yeah, do you want a FaceTime tour? We can also, if you really, if you do want to see it, Brian, I can take you down whenever you want as well, so.
Okay.
Because it is, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, no, I...
I'm a nerd, but I think you would be a nerd for this same type of thing.
All right, well, we were aiming for adjournment at 7:00, so we're not there, but we can be close, so let's take a, a brief break, try to be back if you would by 7:05, and we'll get this thing underway.
Neil.
Thank you, all right, we'll call the council meeting to order, Councilmember Hilliard, if you would offer an invocation, and we've got Councilmember Hutchings giving the pledge, it creates kind of a strange thing, I, I guess, I guess we can do it, right? I mean, would you rather we do it here locally, or, I, I don't really...
You're, you're in charge, you get to pick, I'm, I'm fine doing it.
You have a preference? All right, well, okay, I, I think it's kind of strange unless there's a flag in your hotel room.
I can look at the screen.
Okay, well, I, I, I'll say, I'll say the pledge after.
Perfect, okay. Our dear Father in heaven, we're so very grateful to be able to gather together as a city council this day, we are grateful for our staff that is here, that do so much for our wonderful city, and how well they work together for our betterment, we pray that thou wilt watch over Councilman Hutchings, that he may be able to arrive back home to us and his family safely, we pray that thou wilt guide us this day, guide us as we continue each day to uphold the ordinances of our city and the laws of our state and our nation, that thou wilt help us do so in a manner that is pleasing unto thee, we pray that thou wilt help us, that we may be able to feel of thy love as we do so, and that we may be able to feel the love thou hast for our residents, so that we may be able to see them as thou sees them, we pray that thou wilt continually bless us and strengthen us, and bless our families for the sacrifices that they are making while we are here, and we say these things in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
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 Thank you, please arise and recite the pledge of allegiance with me. Oh, yeah, and please feel free to refer to any of the poster flags, all right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public comments. There's the public.
Those of you guys want to hear about the Bachelor?
Now, we, we don't talk the Bachelor in city council. Okay, and nobody online, so we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Item 12, decision, ordinance 2024-10, changing the zoning designation of property located at 121 West Lakeview Way from R2 to R1. Can I get a motion on that?
I have a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Malkovich.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ben beat you to it, Brian, but seconded by Councilmember Hilliard, Councilmember Malkovich?
Um, yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinniston?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Items 13, and potentially 14, if I can get a motion to approve those fund disbursements.
I'll make a motion to approve the disbursements for December 2023 and January 2024.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lund?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Malkovich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
Next session?
I don't really have any updates other than what I discussed, but if you want to talk strategy, we can certainly go into closed session, but I don't feel... What was that?
It's 7:12.
It is, it's 7:12, and honestly, I, I don't know that there's much to talk about in closed session, but, but if, if anybody has anything they want to talk about, or questions they have, we certainly can. Okay, well, then, if someone will offer a motion to adjourn. Oh, you're kidding me, we're gonna get on a motion to adjourn?
I'm always doing it, I know, I really want to meet for another hour, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Hilliard.
I'll second it.
Second, okay, we'll give that second to you, Brian, you're still a little slow, but seconded by Councilmember Hutchings, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, thanks.
Waiting for Doral the same day.
Thanks, everyone online.
Yeah.
See you guys.